Hold the meeting to order, City Council Chambers, July 18th, 7:34 PM. We're here for, to do our regular city business. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Derek Slaughter and remain standing for the flag salute.
Lord, we thank you for bringing us together once again to do the business of the city. Lord, we pray that you guide our thoughts, guide our decisions, and let us do what is best for the citizens and taxpayers of the city. Lord, as always, we pray that you watch over those in harm's way, both here and abroad. Lord, be with us all. We ask all these things. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which its saints, one nation, integrated, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Slaughter. And we'll move to item three, approval of city minutes dated 6/2019.
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Comments, questions, or corrections? Hearing done.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item four, limited courtesy of the floor, we've had no requests tonight. So we'll move to item five, election of, it's our reorganization, election of council president, actually, and we'll see if we need an election of council vice president, depending on our choice here. So, Mr. Lubin, did we just open it up for nominations?
Yeah.
Nominations from council for president of council.
I'll nominate Randy Allison.
We need a second.
No, we don't need a second. Any other nominations? And nominations for president are closed. And Mrs. Frank on the nomination then, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes. I'm just going to stay seated here. And we'll, so we do need a vice president, and nominations for vice president of council. Mr. Slaughter.
I nominate Liz Mealy for vice president.
Any other nominations for vice president? No nominations, so nominations are closed, and we'll have the vote. Please, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
I am allowed to vote on this. I mean, okay. I've never attended a reorganizational meeting before. I know, it's awkward. Yes, I guess.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. We can switch these.
I was going to say, do we have to?
It's not that important. But just so it's clear to everyone, these are reorganizations just for the remainder of this year. There will be, at the turn of the, into 2020, another reorganization because we'll have a new council, and we'll move forward with that. So this is just to finish out the year.
And this might be a good moment to point out that the reason that council has to hold a reorganizational meeting toward the end of July is because Dr. Williamson stepped down after our last council meeting, and consequently, we will be, we are currently accepting resumes and letters of interest for a position through the beginning of 2020 on city council, and we will be interviewing candidates on the 30th of July and appointing someone to fill the seventh seat on council on August 1st, just for the record. And any interested parties can reach out to the city clerk for more information.
And that seat also ends at the end of the year. That's the end of that term. So it's not a long-term appointment. And since you brought up Dr. Williamson, I thought it appropriate to read a note he left behind in his seat. "All, thank you for being such great colleagues. The city is lucky to have such a talented group representing them, Jonathan, and we miss his expertise and his leadership, but we wish him well in all that they're going to be doing in Houston." I just, and I thank you for your confidence from my colleagues. I just want to make just one comment in general about the rest of the year. Obviously, we're in transition. It's an election year. There's mayor's race. There's four council seats up for which only one seat is an incumbent running, so there's three open seats. So we know for sure we're going to have three new people on council next year. We know for certain that we're going to have a new mayor next year. That's a lot of transition to take in, but I can assure you that we've talked together, and I know all my colleagues are committed to not just riding this year out. We have too many big issues. We have the budget, of course, but a lot of other things are going on. Business needs to be taken care of, but not just so that we can tread water. We have some things in mind, some issues and innovations, different things that we're thinking about moving forward with. I'll have more to say about that probably at our next meeting to give a little bit of detail on that. But we are committed to seeing the city progress the rest of this year, and we're going to be working hard on the budget long before November. We're committed to that as well. We're looking forward to the challenges, and there are many that face us, but if we work together as a team, we can get a lot accomplished, and that's what we want to do the remainder of 2019 and set up 2020 to be a year of more progress. And we want to put some things in place for the next mayor and the next council that will help everybody be successful. So having said that, do you have anything to say, Ms. Mealy?
No, just that I hope that I can fulfill the role of vice president here with, and lead city council as we move forward for the next six months, and then we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
But we hope for excellent things from the next round of elections, and we're excited to move forward with the city.
And we do, we have leadership. We have to have that for orders' sake, but we really do have leadership as a team. We work together. Committees are important to us, and we work by consensus, not by directive from top down. So we're going to continue that. Having said that, I'm going to move item 15, subdivision lot, up to our next item. Mr. Norris is going to handle this. Mrs. Frank, would you read it in short form, please?
It's not, it's not a resolution.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. Mr. Norris, you have the floor.
Good evening, President Allison and members of council. Want to present to you tonight as a subdivision lot addition for Mark A. and Mallory L. Wymer, located at 111 Eldred Street. The proposal is to subdivide a lot number one containing 1,200 square feet from tax parcel 68009101. It will be added to the property rate next to it at 68009102, which is currently owned by Charles Spawn House. This actually was subdivided back in 1993 at the county's request. In order to do a deed or amend or update the deed, they require us to bring this back and add that note in there that that lot one is actually added to the Spawn House. So this is more or less a cleaning of, cleaning up of an error so that they could record a deed properly, and I do have a representative here. It did go through, obviously was reviewed by the county and reviewed by our planning commission and gave positive recommendation from both parties.
Questions from council members.
So we like to hear.
Everything's good, Mr. Norris. Mrs. Frank, on the subdivision, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
We need a motion, Randy.
Oh, motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Thanks.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. We'll move up, we'll continue with item six, appointments and reappointments. We have an appointment tonight for the blighted property, reappointment, actually, blighted property board. Phil Preziosi reappointed to a term commencing July 3rd, 2019, and ending July 3rd, 2020. And... Who's, okay, the mayor's not here. Is there anybody to address this?
He did go to a committee.
Yeah, he did go to a committee, but went to ERC, and so I'm cheer of that. We interviewed Mr. Preziosi, and we had a good conversation with him. He's been valuable, volunteer for the city for many years on different committees and commissions. He's on the redevelopment authority, and this is another important one, the blighted property board, and he shared with us his ideas and some things that we could have done going forward. So we don't make a recommendation on it, but that's just the information that we provide to council. So having said that, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Question to comments, one of the council members. If not, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes. Item seven, an ordinance, vacation of a portion of Dubois Street. Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance, vacation of a portion of Dubois Street.
On the first reading, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, President Allison, members of council. What you have before you is an ordinance to vacate a portion of Dubois Street, which was requested by Mr. Jeff Carey. This vacation was requested so that he could do some development in that block. All the public utilities have been cleared, and it did go before Public Works, and I would, I would defer to the chair of Public Works now to explain what came out of that.
You have four.
Okay. Yes, it did come to Public Works. We did something, Norm, that I was told afterwards that we couldn't do at a committee meeting, and we tabled it, which I guess we're not supposed to do that at a committee meeting? We didn't want to pass it on.
You can make a decision. You can let council know that for one reason or another, the matter was not handled by a committee.
Okay. All right. But that's what we did. The reason why we did it, okay, first of all, there's a, really a touchy thing here with the deed. The deed went back to, and this is where a resident historian who went back and really researched a lot of this, to an AFFY, A-F-F-Y, Dum, D-U-M-M, who owned that piece of property. And there was no record of this changing hands to the city at any point in time. They could not find it. So there's still a, there's an iffy thing there of who really has this, who owns this, and could they come back, could the, any of the family come back to the city and say, "I own this property"? So that was one of the problems. The other problem that we had is Mr. Carey really has no plans for this. All he wanted is, he wanted us to vacate this street, but we don't vacate a street unless there's plans and direct plans of what is going to be done with that. The third thing is, it is a brick street, so therefore, there's a lot of different moving parts here of why we didn't want to bring this forward with anything because of that. But the big problem, I think, is with the deed itself. That's one of the things. I don't know if we can overcome that or not. And then, again, we follow a process. We have been, in the last couple of years, we have been adamant that we follow a process of how we go through things, and this has not followed a process as far as where and how this is going to be done. So as I said, we tabled it, and I guess we should have said, we're not, we passed this on to the full body of council with no recommendation at all.
With your recommendation, then, is to table this?
I would like to table this.
You'd like a motion to table?
So we need a motion for that at this point?
You'd like a motion to table?
Can I make that motion? I make a motion that we table vacating a portion of Dubois Street.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I don't believe in a discussion on a table, correct?
Discussion is not allowed to table a motion itself.
Okay.
Oh, and also then, I do have one item for discussion, or perhaps a question for the solicitor, which is if this item is tabled, it's effectively sent back to Public Works for further exploration?
You could refer it back to them, or at least to find out about who the key is.
Okay. I mean, because obviously, if it's tabled with no particular guidance, then it just sits there, so...
She can answer the issues raised by the council.
Right.
Right.
I think the implication is that she's raised three issues, and table would be resolved as soon as possible.
Got it. Secondary question, Norm, I do have a few questions about the item itself and other issues that might arise with it. Will there be, will there be space for that discussion if we make, if we vote on the tabling?
You put issues on the idea of...
I'm really curious if we've ever, well, the street being a through street that continues from one side of his properties to another side of his properties, is there a more complex process for vacating a street like that than simply, I mean, it would seem at least as though notification of the neighboring properties to either end of the street.
If you vacate the street, you're just eliminating the public's right to use the street.
Right.
If anyone else, through deeds or subdivision laws, have the right to use the street, you're not affecting any private rights by vacating the street.
Right.
The real issue is that by closing it off, is it going to affect, for example, fire or police using the street?
Precisely. Which, in this case, I think is, it's a pretty minor street, I think is a relatively minor consideration, but does it, does it affect the surrounding properties that will, who's the employees for which might use, you know?
He owns on both sides.
Do they, you know, if you're a block away, do you use that street to get to and from your property?
Exactly.
Whether, because right now, you have a public right to use it.
Yeah. I guess what I'm asking is, from that perspective, do we have a process, I mean, most of the streets, the only streets I've seen us vacate in my time on council were streets that say dead-ended into somebody's property, and so we vacate, you know, we've never vacated a through street, in my experience. Is there, is there a more complex process?
Even if the city vacates that, he still has to go and come through all of those entities that may be affected by that in order for him to basically have that deed as his own. So he would legally have to go through a process. It's just not something we vacate, he automatically gets it. He has to go through a legal process.
That was my concern, yes.
In order to make that happen.
Okay. So we're not the final point, then?
We're just saying, the public's right to utilize that street.
Right. But we do still have some deed questions, and, right, and then you've got the brick street, right? Okay.
With that being said, I do have a meeting in the works with Mr. White, and Mr. Lubin, if you'd like to sit in, you're welcome, and the mayor, and Jeff Carey is going to come and sit in on that as well for early next week.
I think Gary Norris should be part of that meeting.
Gary could, more than welcome, and try to iron out this, the legal part of this, but I... Ownership part of this.
And I guess my secondary question then goes back to Bonnie's question, which is, I mean, do we have a habit of just vacating a street because someone asks us to, or is there...
From my best experience, street vacations have usually been done where, as you said, it dead-ends into a property, and all the property owners have gotten together, order that dead-end street, and say, "Yes, we'd like to have this vacated," and then we make sure that there's no utility lines in the street. But I have, I can't think of one off the top of my head where we have vacated a street, a portion of a street. The closest would be Walnut Street. A portion of that was vacated when the hospital did their expansion.
Right. And Nice Street, I think, down here by the movie theater, but that was a two-block street, and they were on one end of it.
Yeah, but the primary one would have been Walnut Street.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the one I can think of. But there, the hospital had indicated they were going to make arrangements with public services.
They were going to, I'm sorry, Norm, I didn't catch that. They were going to...
At that time, they'd indicated they were going to make arrangements with public services regarding use of the street by police or fire. Obviously, ambulances use it all the time.
Yeah.
But that's about the, the only major one I could think of. We've closed off to traffic portions of, for example, Willow Street, and I think Blue, and then the portion beside the library was closed off. There was just closed to traffic. We didn't give up the right, the city's right in the street.
Got it. So I guess, if, when we table this item and when it is then reviewed later and further by Public Works, part of what I'm curious about is, I'm concerned that our process for vacating streets in this case perhaps is not stringent enough.
It's been done on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
Because everyone comes in with a different reason for wanting a street vacated.
Right. Exactly. It does sound as though every time...
And it becomes discretionary with city council, ultimately, do we approve the street vacation to eliminate, and all it does is eliminate the public's right to use the street.
Well, in this case, it could very well eliminate the street, correct?
Well, if it would eliminate the public's right to use it, if anybody else has an individual right because of prior deeds, it doesn't affect their right.
Right. But I guess, I get the sense that perhaps, although there doesn't seem to be any particular plan in motion right now, Mr. Carey's intent would at some point be to completely eliminate the street and construct...
Just that one section.
Yeah, just the chunk in the ordinance, right. Right? To...
To Laurel Street.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the issue and what our, what our procedures are, not because they haven't necessarily been followed, I'm not even certain, but just whether or not we should have some, some more stringent requirements involved with that process.
We did vacate an unused, unnamed alley, I think, between East Third Street and Eureka, but there was a business there that...
That's actually Saber Court. You referring to Saber Court?
Yeah.
Saber Court, we did vacate a part of that, we're going to review it. That was probably back even eighty, seventy-nine?
No, more recently. It's all green now, but they're between Eureka and East Third, because they were, they're going to put something in there. There was a plan for a project.
I don't recognize that.
Between, before Penn Street.
Saber Court is all green.
Is what they call Saber Court. Part of that vacated. We did review through ERC to vacate Saber Court between Church Street and Church Street.
Right.
Again, that's a sign of the same premise, provides a development.
Yeah, right.
We'll do it positively, but until we have development, we won't move forward with vacating that street.
Right.
What I can tell you is, I do have a developer, and he's getting ready to develop it, and I have a plan and a deal with the art pit, so we will be bringing that back before you. But again, there's a development, not just a possibility.
And there wasn't a real throughway there anymore. It had, yeah.
It just, just that vacant...
I guess, has, did fire and police sign off on this?
I know fire, fire did.
I guess...
They're okay with it, chief.
Okay. So we have a lot of the process to go through. I guess I wonder how this got to this point.
That's what I said, that there was not a process that went through to bring to us at all. It was just, this was handed to us, and it just, it didn't clarify anything, you know?
Yeah.
And there's a lot more questions.
To be presented as an actual ordinance.
But I guess my, my concern is if there's a meeting next week, or when the next Public Works meeting comes up, that we'd be able to hand Mr. Carey some very real sort of steps that need to be taken before, you know, you see what I'm saying?
We more or less told him that, that he had to have a plan, that we just don't close the street, and that's what we discussed with him.
Well, then, just, I think that we need to make sure that the administration and council are on the same page with what we are comfortable with, so that, so that we're not sending mixed messages to him if this...
No, and Mr. Carey was, he was, he was all right with that. He understood, he understood all of our questions and why we were not going forward with this.
Great, terrific.
We have a preliminary checklist for street vacations, and I'm glad for the councils that you know. There's something that we discussed quite, quite a while back, we just never, one of the benefits, we never had a broad word as far as...
Got it. Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you for all the clarification and all of that discussion on tabling this item. And that's, that's it for my other question.
So I think we're ready to vote on the table. On the motion to table, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you. Motion to table passes. Item eight, an ordinance amending the city map to remove the following street from the protected brick street list, first reading. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance amending the city map to remove the following street from protected brick street list.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a companion ordinance to the other one, so it's just amending the map to do something we didn't do. So I would imagine...
Same, same process.
Yeah.
Same process.
So...
Make a motion that we table?
Second.
Motion and a second to table, any discussion on this? If not, Mrs. Frank on the motion to table, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes. We'll move to item 10, resolution to ratify a settlement agreement, or no, item nine, skip the one there, resolution for consulting agreement with Williamsport Bureau of Police and the state PA Chiefs Police Association. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution for consulting agreement between the Williamsport Bureau of Police and the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Chief Hagan, welcome tonight.
Good evening, council. President Allison, Vice President Mealy, congratulations. The resolution you have before you, as you know, has already, we've already taken action on it. It is for a consulting agreement. In the past, we had an arrangement or an agreement with the PA Chiefs. They provide special services for police departments, in this case, oral board examination, expertise in the form of a three-person panel, and the expertise in developing the questions and so forth for our process. This was already done, as you know, and it was done effectively. We did have oral boards after our written test, and we do now have an active civil service program. promotion list as a result of this. So it worked out very well. PA Chiefs is a highly professional organization and we intend on doing business with them going far out into the future. So again, just a proposal for consulting services for a period of a couple of years or a couple of cycles, I think. Our agency had gotten away from it, but we're back in business with them and we're happy to do that. That's all.
Thank you, Chief Hagan. This was reviewed by finance.
This did come to the finance committee and we had a small amount of discussion around this and the state of the hiring list in the police department, but nothing too terribly exciting. The upshot was that this actually, while it initially appeared that we might have as many as thirteen candidates, I think in the final analysis, there were only six who wound up being interviewed. So the contract had allowed for two days, but we only used one, which saved us even some of the money that we initially thought we might spend on it. So it was a relatively inexpensive way to sort of to do the, to follow proper procedure in the police department, if you will, and make certain that we have promotional lists that then, but then I believe the one thing you did mention, Chief, is that these promotional lists then promotions are based, I believe, entirely on discussion amongst command staff, correct? But this is a list of people who qualified for promotion. Was that the...you'll have to excuse me if I'm misremembering our discussion, but you...
Can you say that again?
That promotions within the department are, once the list is, once the list is created, are based on decisions of the command staff from that list, basically.
Approval of the mayor and we make recommendations to the mayor, the mayor approves based on, obviously based on the budget and other needs. But yes, we go from that list in order based on the final result, which is a combination of written and oral test scores, and they count fifty percent each toward a final average. And then they're placed in ranks based on their final score. That's it.
Other questions or comments?
The other thing, too, just because they pass the test does not mean that they're hired into that position, if I understood that correctly, right?
Correct. It's a civil service list. So we have a contract and we're required, based on that contract, to maintain an active civil service list, both for new hires and also for promotions. The promotion list is something that we renew every eighteen months for the four ranking positions within the collective bargain, or within the bargaining unit, corporal, sergeant, agent, and lieutenant. So that's it.
Which we found that since this was done before, it's interesting how we find out that going back to some of the old things that were done before are more beneficial into what's going on now.
Well, certainly in a situation if someone contested a score, it would be much better to have gone to an outside agency with professional credentials to, for proctoring and interviewing and so forth. It puts us in a much better position from a liability standard if someone contests a score. So we're happy to do this. Yes, ma'am.
And the other thing, too, if they don't, if someone doesn't pass the test, as you stated, they can retry in eighteen months.
Yes.
Eighteen months, okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? The only comment I have to make is that there's also another service that the same group provides. We talked a little bit about it, but with regional police services studies. And there's a lot of talk about regionalization in a lot of areas. So if we ever get to that point in this area, there's a possibility, or at least we know there's a group that can help study that and have some ideas if we need that. So that's also a positive. No other questions or comments? Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you. Motion passes. I'm going to move item twelve up. We have some representatives of the county here tonight and don't want to keep them longer than they have to. So the MOU between the city of Williamsport and Lake Coming County for the levy. Mrs. Frank in short form, please.
Resolution of the city council of the city of Williamsport, Pennsylvania to adopt a memorandum of understanding of joint cooperation for funding and project management with the county of Lake Coming.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second? Yes, yes. Mr. Nichols.
And a freshman going to present to speak to this resolution. He's a member of the Greater Williamsport Area Levy Committee. You know, the most members of the county, of the county, and Loyal Sox outside of Lake Coming, you know, that are all involved in this levy project. So he's been assigned to help with that committee. And he's from the RVT staff. So and also Chelsea Blair is here from the county also to speak to the MOU. And we thank you for allowing that to be put on the agenda because it's a time issue in terms of a grant. So I'll defer to Andrew to speak to the MOU.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Mr. Kremsen.
Good evening, President Allison, Vice President Mealy, members of council. You have before you the resolution to adopt the MOU between the city of Williamsport and Lake Coming County. This will be for the joint cooperation of funding and project management for the levy committee or project.
Thank you. Reviewed by... For finance, yes.
Do you want, did I just read the resolution in any form? Or did we?
Didn't I?
I'm sorry, I'm missing stuff all the time. But this, this item did come before the finance committee was reviewed and with just some discussion, I believe the item had originally been presented to us as an amendment of an existing MOU, but it is in fact a new MOU with the county. There will be several related to work on the levy to codify what's becoming a very beneficial but also somewhat complex relationship between the city and the county and other municipalities, in fact, to try to find and implement funds for work on the levy system. The exciting thing is that we have been so far somewhat successful and we hope to be more successful. And the county has already been instrumental in helping us to sort of organize this effort, which really is in the long run a regional effort. The existence and the continued certification of the levy within Williamsport, Loyal Sox, Old Lake Coming, and South Williamsport is crucial to the well-being of the county as a whole. That said, this resolution and the accompanying MOU frankly simply recognized the commitments of the various, of both of the parties. The county is committing some funds. The city has already obviously committed quite a bit of money to the project and we anticipate committing more as we begin to get some of the grants and some of the work underway. But the county is sort of spearheading the organization of our efforts and we deeply appreciate that. And we pass this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Mrs. Katz.
Going over this, first of all, you know, we thank you for all the tremendous work that you, what the county is doing. Plus, it's not only with the county, it's also the chambers put some private funding into this. So it's turning out that everybody is working together at this point to pull everything, all our resources together to accomplish what seven years ago we thought we were on our own with. And as the bill kept on escalating up to the twelve, fifteen, sixteen million dollar mark, we were really getting really hyper. And due to you, Chelsea, Fran McJunkin, and the county, and like I said, the chamber putting their funds into it and their voice also, it does help tremendously to take the burden off, realizing that we are the county seat, that we, this, if the levy, if anything happens to the levy, this will be disastrous for the whole county. So therefore, it's very important that so many people are now voicing our needs and our wants. So thank you very much.
I think it's also great to note, too, that over the last year and a half, it's all parties. It definitely has been from the city as well, really stepping forward and stepping up as well. And we have a great working group, a great working committee right now. And thanks to Andrew, thanks to council, thanks to the administration, and really all the municipality partners within the Greater Williamsport area. That's why we've kind of moved forward in naming it the Greater Williamsport Area System because it truly is. It's affecting five municipalities and all five municipalities have stepped in and with some funds and with some money. It's one of the first public-private partnerships within the nation for this type of work and is being recognized down in DC for that. So moving forward with that as well, DC and the Army Corps of Engineers is beginning to really realize that. They're starting to feel the push, they're starting to feel the heat, and we're planning to keep on pushing that forward.
Thank you. Mr. Henderson.
This obviously is on a time schedule and so consequently it got to us later than normal for us. At last, the last I understood, we weren't sure, has this been looked at by our solicitor?
Yes.
And this has been approved by our solicitor as well? It has, okay. I know there was a question about that and I don't remember receiving an answer about that. So that's good. And so, yes, our solicitor approved.
I can also add a little bit, and too, I know that it was a very quick turnaround time, so we do apologize for that. This is meeting a grant deadline that is occurring next Friday, July twenty-sixth, for the EDA grant. It is primarily for the cross-pipe work that is being done. The EDA work that will be accompanied with that is all deficient cross-pipes in the northeast section and all minimally acceptable cross-pipes in the northeast and northwest section. So that is a great effort in itself. And when we get through that and we get through the relief wells, the only item that remains deficient is the lovely eye walls. And we know that with pushing forward with that, we'll be okay. But again, we apologize for that short notice of the MOU. But to also let you know, too, it has been reviewed by the county solicitor as well and everything's okay on that part, too. And county will be moving to action next week.
Thank you. And of course, we understand there are things that, because of time constraints, there are times when we are forced to kind of press our normal limits. And so we understand that. There are a few things on our agenda tonight that perhaps maybe came just a little too soon and that we could, we could wait, make sure we get everything in place. And so it's a hard balance to know, okay, is this crucial for right now or is this something that we can wait and make sure we get it all together? Obviously, this is something we need to do now. And I feel confident that the team has done well in making sure that everything is examined here, that we're doing it the right way. And so I appreciate that and I do have confidence in the team for that. And so thank you so much. It's not normal, it shouldn't be normal for us to go outside of our proper procedures, but from time to time, we have to. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Other comments or questions? I don't have anything to say particularly on this. I think it's all been said, but I had the opportunity to talk to Chelsea and Andrew on the way in. We just happened to come in at the same time and had some interesting conversations about possibilities in the future. So there's a lot of momentum in this area that carries beyond the levy. And I think we're going to, over the next couple of years, see a lot of good things come out of it. Start as a very high hill to climb, but thanks to different entities coming together and cooperative efforts, that's always the key, working together, we can accomplish a lot. And I think that's going to pay off. But we thank you for all the two of you have done and everyone else in the county. And it's nice to have somebody in the county as well that started working on the levy when she was on this side of the street and now has moved on and brings a good perspective for both. So we thank you both very much. Having said that, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move back up to item ten, resolution to ratify settlement agreements for employee claims. Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to ratify settlement agreements for certain employee claims.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So move.
In a second?
Second, excuse me.
There's a motion in a second. Mr. Pavlov, welcome. Oh, is it true? Happy birthday.
I don't know what you're hearing, this stuff.
Bill Nichols couldn't take over this little item, so you could be out drinking right now.
I think that this is quite a party we're having, so let's liven it up with a settlement.
Somebody hand out the party hats.
Well, you could have jumped out of the cake tonight, but in any case, happy birthday to you.
Thank you. The resolution before you settles and ratifies settlement agreements with various city employees for claims that they've made against the city. The city has insurance coverage, which has defended the city in these claims, and the insurance carriers determined that settling with the employees is the appropriate course of action. Currently, they've came to agreements of settlement for two employees and there's a proposal in place or being worked upon for a third. The city in these settlements does not make any admissions to any wrongdoing or any other basis for the claims, and any amounts approved in the settlements will be covered through the insurance carrier. This was reviewed on Tuesday by the finance committee.
It was. Ms. Mealy.
And forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. We actually had very little discussion on this issue aside from, obviously, to note that these funds were coming from the city's insurance carrier, which had determined that without, despite no admission of wrongdoing, this was the wisest path to take for these three settlements. As I said, it came to come to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Any other comments or questions? And this, this is actually our former carrier, not our...
Yeah, these claims were all made before two thousand and nineteen.
Right. And we held an RFP last year and changed carriers, but this is closing out, so. No other comments or questions? Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item eleven, resolution to amend the list of historically significant buildings. Mrs. Frank in short form, please.
Resolution to amend the list of historically significant buildings and sites in the city of Williamsport.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Thank you. And Ms. Wysinski, welcome tonight.
Good evening. Take that out for a minute. This is a resolution, as it says, to amend and to maintain the original two thousand and five historic sites and survey list. That original list was a combination of studies that were done in nineteen seventy-one, in nineteen seventy-three, and also in two thousand and five, a subcommittee of the Council Committee on Historic Preservation got together and added quite a few properties to that list. There have been no changes or updates to that two thousand and five list since two thousand and five. In two thousand and eighteen, the council committee reappointed a subcommittee to review the existing list and to consider if there were any problems... a subcommittee to review the existing list and to consider if there were any properties that should be added to it. And the committee did its job, and the copies of the original list and the suggested new list are attached to your packet. It should be noted that this list is just a recognition of historic importance, either architecturally or historically, history-wise, or that it's something unique, or it could be something that is eligible for listing on the National Register. At this point, it does not entail any restrictions on the use of the property. This was reviewed by the Finance Committee on Tuesday.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
And we should mention, previously reviewed by the Committee on Historic Preservation, which meets monthly and on the fourth Tuesday in the month. So, it was forwarded from the Committee on Historic Preservation and then reviewed by Finance as well. There aren't any financial implications necessarily to the updating of this list, but we, I think the whole process started, the city, as part of an agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office, when we demolished the old Brodard Building on Memorial Avenue, the city was required to include a list of Williamsport's historic structures as part of our demolition permitting process. Not that the structure doesn't necessarily factor, you know, the historicity of the structure doesn't factor into whether or not it can be demolished, but we're required to include it as part of the reporting for demolitions. And so, when we agreed to that requirement, we also realized that our list of historic structures was sorely out of date. And then, over the last few years, sort of initiated a review of that list, and it finally culminated in a renewed list. The goal with this new list, or updated list, is to maintain it on a slightly more regular basis. And for that purpose, we've currently proposed that the subcommittee that compiled the list will meet annually to review additions and/or subtractions from the list, whether at the request of specific homeowners, or because the building has been modified in some way or another that makes it no longer suitable. But, all of that said, it is simply a minor piece of housekeeping, but one that can be hard to get around to when you've got a number of other responsibilities. And so consequently, this takes care of that. The one other thing that should be mentioned as part of adopting this somewhat expanded and modified list of historic structures is that the city currently has, I believe, Mary, it's $225,000 in fair funds that are available for residential, for grants for residential remodeling related to historic structures, so structures that appear on this list in particular. There are some income restrictions on those funds, but as long as we're updating the list, it bears mentioning, for the sake of the public, that there are some grant funds associated with historic structures, and that if your property appears on this list, and you are looking for funds to do renovations, it might be worth contacting Mary Rosinski's office to inquire as to whether or not your property fits the requirements for the funds. That said, Finance forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Comments or questions?
The only thing, the only other thing that we discussed was that we were going to make sure that this was passed on to the county?
Yes.
And that the county would?
Thank you, Bonnie.
Yes.
Put this on their website, that we can share the information?
Yes, it's just about ready.
Fantastic.
We even exacted a promise from Chelsea Blair, too.
Yes, we did.
But, yeah, I think that, it even becomes frankly, a tourism asset, if we can have it as a GIS layer on the county's website, the historic structures in the city.
Any other comments or questions from council? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Rosinski. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. We're down to item 13, Resolution to Reject Bids. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution rejecting all Williamsport City Hall renovation project bids and authorization to rebid.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
Some move. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Mr. Cooley tonight?
Good evening, President and Vice President, members of council. Before you, you have a resolution to reject the City Hall bids and authorize a rebid of the project. The project team has decided that the best strategy due to some language in the bid documents is to rebid this and clarify those documents, so that we get accurate and concise bids. The bids were reviewed by the Solicitor Jill Nagy, and she concurs with this. Tentatively, we are going to advertise on August 2nd and 3rd. The bid documents would be available on the 5th then, and we would receive bids on September 3rd and bring a recommendation for award on September 12th to council. Our on-site construction manager from Reynolds is with us tonight, if you have any other questions. And this was reviewed by Finance, and I'll turn it over to the chair.
This was reviewed by Finance and forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. It's an unfortunate holdup on the moving forward with the City Hall renovation project, but at this point, it's something that's sort of done. And there's, I believe I understood from Mr. Cooley, no financial implications to the rebidding process for this, which is good to hear, because it can be a costly process to have to undertake twice. And so, that's exciting, but it does set us back by about another month, month and a half, it seems to me, before we would see any work begin to happen in City Hall. That said, as I said before, we forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Comments or questions from council tonight?
Yeah. It's hard. Obviously, we want to move ahead with some decisions on making the needed upgrades to the building, but we just don't have the information that we need yet to be able to move ahead. And so, we were hopeful, but, so this does delay it, but it doesn't stop it. It doesn't stop it. And I think that's important to understand. There are big decisions that the council has to make with reference to what specifically we can afford and what is necessary. And there just are a lot of big decisions to make, and we can't make those decisions without the right information. And so, we have to do this. We are compelled to do this, and I just wanted to point that out. There is no desire on the part of council to drag our feet and delay and delay and delay some needed upgrades to this building. But we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to use the money wisely. And it should be noted that all of the money that is available for these projects is borrowed money. It just is. It's not like we have anything sitting in the bank somewhere. And so, we are compelled even more to make sure that we are wisely spending these borrowed dollars. So, thank you for bringing this to us. It's unfortunate, but it's necessary. And so, we anticipate having some information to be able to make some better decisions, accurate decisions, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Mrs. Katz?
I think I'll add on to that, because we have a group of people sitting here tonight who have been coming to our committee meetings and really concerned about accessibility for all taxpayers. And due to human error, the bidding process was not done correctly. And because of that, we cannot go forward with that. And I hope you all understand, this was a human error. We are trying to correct it, so we have the correct information, and that we are moving forward. I don't want you to think that this was done, that we weren't transparent with this, all right? Because I know Karen comes to all my committee meetings, and Karen is really, at times, she doesn't understand where we're coming from. We can't give answers if we don't have the information, and that's what it boils down to. And until we get the information, we can't go forward with it. And please understand that we are working on this process.
Other comments or questions? I have a comment in general about City Hall. Been on council for 10 years now, and doing something in City Hall has been studied more than once or twice over the period I've been here, and it was studied before that. There's never been, there's never been a plan, a strategic plan from, it has to come from the highest individual, the least authorizing it or asking for it in the city regarding City Hall. It's been studied different times, different dollar amounts each time. It's hard to make an informed decision when the process is so dysfunctional, is how I'm going to characterize it. Like, having an idea of what we want to do with the building, do we want to do anything long-term with the building? Should we be here? Council began a study, or began conversations, at least four years ago or so, about possibly looking at a new, a whole new management and a whole new rearrangement of our facilities for not just the administrative side, but also for the public safety side. We need to be forward-thinking. We can't make a decision now because we're changing administrations next year. That kind of big decision has to be made then. But we have to make smaller decisions now in light of the possibility of a big change in the future, and what that would mean, and how it would be done, and how we could make that cost-effective, which I think there are possibilities there. So, we do have this decision before us tonight, but there's a larger context about it. And I just want to, I think all of council would like to assure the public that we're not content with patchwork solutions. We're looking for long-term plans that are going to address all the needs of the community, as well as the best needs for city government in the 21st century, which has changed a lot just in the past 20 years, since we've entered the 26th century, or 21st century. So, in any case, just to plant that seed there, and leave that as part of the discussion in the future. Any further comments from council? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Cooley. Then that takes us to, if I'm right, item 14, Resolution to Approve an Easement. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please?
Resolution to approve an easement agreement between the city of Williamsport and McCormick Associates Incorporated.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Winder, welcome.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you doing?
This is a resolution for an easement agreement between the city of Williamsport and McCormick Law Firm to expand the parking lot at McCormick Law Firm onto the Ways Garden property. This would create 19 more parking stalls, one which would be accessible. It would have the ability for a van, accessible van, to park there. It is part of the grant for the pavilion, in a sense. In order for the grant to be closed out at the end of the project, we have to have an accessible parking stall. So, the Ways Garden Commission, the administration, and McCormick Law Firm has all come together and discussed the creation of a larger parking lot at McCormick Law Firm, creating an access road off the alley to the south of Ways Garden. This was reviewed by Solicitor Jill Nagy that actually reviewed it due to the insurance information in here, and it was reviewed, or passed by Public Works with no recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Winder. Mrs. Katz?
Yes, we really had a long discussion about this. One of the problems that we had goes to, I should have marked the page, with what the responsibility of the city is and Ways Gardens and McCormick Law. And it would be on Section F on Page 3, as far as who was going to take care of, huge discussion on snow removal. McCormick Law would be responsible during the week, but there was no responsibility stated as far as who was going to take care of snow removal in the parking lot there during the weekends. And what the language was stating is that it would fall back on the city. We didn't like that language at all. We didn't think they should fall back on the city to take care of the parking lot at all. So, that was one thing, one of the discussions that we had. Mr. Winder did say that he would have no problem finding an accessible spot on the property itself on the map, even closer. You were still looking into that, as far as how many feet is needed for the accessible spot?
Right. If this does not pass, we have to do something, or this city's stuck foot in the bill. So, my final answer will be that we're gonna have to pave something in there. I think the parking lot with McCormick is the better solution. It definitely gives you more parking at Ways Garden for the events, but in the end, I just gotta come up with a backup plan in case this doesn't get approved.
Really, our discussion really boiled down to the snow removal, okay, and who was going to take care of that. And we are responsible for the alley that goes through there, because it is city property.
Correct. We maintain the alley.
The city, we maintain that. So, it was only that part of the language that we had a problem with. And so, we did not pass it with a positive recommendation.
No recommendation?
No, I meant that. No recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Mr. Henderson?
Yes, I was in the committee meeting as well. We had a lot of questions. And at that time, McCormick had yet to approve this agreement. As of that meeting, do we have any idea as to where we are?
I will refer to Joe P.
I've been passing information back between Mike Wiley of McCormick Law. To the best of my knowledge, the partners have all approved the language that's included, but I can't confirm. And I think Adam tried to reach out to Mr. Wiley today, and I don't think has gotten a response either.
Okay. Yeah. My personal concern was just that we just didn't have enough information, again, that we just, it seemed as though, you know, our Streets and Parks Director was uncomfortable completely with this agreement, and we didn't have even assurance that McCormick was on board. So, you know, we felt perhaps maybe something might come up in the interim that would solve these questions. This also was an agreement that we didn't receive until the morning of our committees. And so, we were unable to read through it in its entirety, even before we had it before us in the committee. So, again, there was a rush on this. I was uncomfortable giving approval, because I just didn't feel like we had enough time or enough information. I was uncomfortable giving approval because I just didn't feel like we had enough time or enough information. So, my question would be if we were to delay in some way, whether that's table it, and then, you know, we could still, we could still bring this back and maybe amend it if we came to some better agreements. But I think, would we have enough time? I mean, there's, I would assume that we have enough time over the next couple of weeks to make some more decisions and make sure we have an agreement that everybody's on board with?
I'm going to bring Mr. Whitmer up here. He is actually the construction manager on this project also.
Okay.
Good evening. Dave Whitmer, Reynolds Construction Management. We are near completion of the pavilion, which Adam had touched on earlier. To get occupancy, we do have to have one handicap parking stall which is accessible to use the pavilion. Now, I know there's other things that are in the works for the park itself as far as lighting and some walkways and things, but the parking lot is kind of going to hold the final payment up from the grant to the city. So, there's a concern there.
From what I understood in the committee meeting, the, our responsibility was to put the sub-base down for that parking lot, and then McCormick was going to pave it, is that correct?
That's in the agreement. I have not personally seen the agreement.
Okay. To pave it. So, that we have plans already to lay out the parking lot. It's just the paving that's in question if this agreement were not approved?
That would be correct.
Okay. So, that theoretically, if we were able to find money to pave one parking stall, one handicap parking stall, that wouldn't hold up the entire? And I'm not saying that's the solution, but theoretically, we could do that and still be able to close out these and get the grant funding?
Theoretically, yes.
Okay. In my opinion, I don't think we need to rush this through if we could still get that grant funding without it. Now, ideally, we want this, but we need to make sure that we have, we have agreement on all parts. I just don't, I'm just not sure that we have that right now, so, thank you.
Yes. What I'm curious about is, so, by how much are we holding up the grant funding if we give ourselves two weeks to work on this agreement?
We'll be fine.
Yeah.
We anticipate the major construction, the major construction, the roof and the flooring will be completed by the end of the month.
Okay, well, that's, because our next meeting is August 1st. And it seems to me like all the details probably could be worked out between now and August 1st. But, I mean, I did have a number of items circled on this agreement that I had a couple of questions about. None of, and none of them are showstoppers, and it seems to me like it's probably the wisest way to move forward. I don't, I don't think any of us necessarily feel like this is a bad thing. It's just trying to figure out, you know? So, if we can do, if we could table it and work on it in the next committee meeting and shoot for an August 1st time to have the agreement finalized, it seems to me like it might be wiser because we've got, McCormick can be fully on board. We can know for certain that they're in agreement before we agree. And, because frankly, because they're simply pulling a bunch of partners. I think their agreement should come before ours, do you know what I'm saying? And then, then our agreement, because we've got to get all seven of us together to issue it, probably should come as the final piece in the puzzle. And I also was given to understand this afternoon, and I noticed in a couple of places in the agreement that we call out the Ways Garden Commission, which is, I believe, kind of a separate legal entity, right? A sort of a unique.
Yes, they are very unique.
Well, I'm aware that they're unique.
They're different than all the other commissions.
Yeah, but the way in which the commission itself operates is different from like the Brandon Park Commission, and right?
Yes.
And I don't believe that the Ways Garden Commission has had an opportunity to specifically review this document either, correct?
I am not 100% sure.
I can answer that, no, they haven't.
Right. So, two weeks' time would give us time. I'd be more than happy to take it to the Ways Garden Commission if that would be useful at all because I know that your schedule is a little crunched, Mr. Winder.
Yeah, if they even hold a regular meeting, it would be a lot easier.
Right. But it seems like two weeks might give us time to dot all our i's because certainly if they're, if they're mentioned in the agreement, then they should, then they should have reviewed the agreement before, it comes before council as well. So, if I can have.
If I can, I think I can speak for the team that's working on this project that we would appreciate tabling this for two weeks. I'm fairly certain that we can figure out the details that are still, you know, up in the air. I've been following it through the process. And I don't think that there's a problem solving those issues by the next meeting. We'll reach out to the committee and make sure we address all the concerns that have been raised.
Got it. Excellent. If I can ask, if I can bring up just two more points before we move on to a table in motion, only because this is just a forum for bringing those out. Do we often issue perpetual easements?
I'm sorry?
Do we often issue perpetual easements as a city? I feel like I've seen 99-year agreements and things like that, but I guess perpetual, never mind. An easement is generally perpetual, it's the least, it's not, but.
That's an answer I don't, or a question I don't have an answer for. I could call John Greado and ask him.
Well, the only reason I'm wondering is that we know that the grantee is responsible for initially paving the lot, and then it says that they're responsible for sealing and relining the lot. But we don't address what happens when, as will happen at some point in perpetuity here, the lot actually needs to be repaved. So, do they continue to be responsible for the repaving of the lot every time that becomes a necessity? Or does that responsibility? I'm assuming that, but I don't know if the language really calls it out. So, I just wanted to make sure we were covering that. But, but that, I think that was my only other concern there. But, anyway, with that said, if everyone's comfortable with the state of affairs right now, I will make a motion to table this agreement until our next council meeting and send it back to Public Works for further review.
In a second, to table it. And if we could just reiterate the point that it's council's preference that we get it sooner rather than later.
Totally agree.
So, that we all have time to review it and answer our questions. Thank you. Mrs. Frank on the motions table, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion's tabled, or motion's table's passed. And thank you, Mr. Winder, and Mr. Whitmer, and Mr. Nicklaus. Item 16, then, certificate of appropriateness, 120 West Fourth Street. Mr. Nar is going to handle this one.
Correct. Good evening, President Allison, and members of council. What I present to you is a certificate of appropriateness request. The property is 120 West Fourth Street. The owner's Williamsport Property Incorporated. The tenant is Clean Slate. What they are requesting to do is mount a business sign by two, two and a half feet with eight-inch-thick, wide, die-bond, white, with Clean Slate Medical Group entrance and off-green coloring on the side of the building. So, it will not actually be on Fourth Street, it'll be on the side of the building. And they're requesting the certificate of appropriateness be approved. Now, Clean Slate was located down in Executive Plaza, and they did have a similar sign. It just didn't have the green backing, so we thought we'd bring it back before council. But it was the same size and everything, same material that council had approved previously several years ago.
Questions or comments?
This is less regarding the sign, which seems perfectly above-board, and more regarding the way in which the building is occupied, I guess. You said this is on the side of the building?
Yep. It's the first National Bank building. They have, they have the back half of the building, so it'll be back in that back parking areas where the sign will be located. It will not be out front. There is a tentative tenant that would be located in the front part of the building.
Okay, that was my question. So, the building has been subdivided into two different rental units, if you will?
Correct.
That's everything I have.
Any other questions or comments from council? Is there a motion?
Some move.
Motion in a second. Mrs. Frank on item 16, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Thank you, Mr. Nar. Item 17, then, certificate of appropriatenesses for HARB. Item two is, I think we've had this group before, but, force group? I believe the pronunciation. 305 Campbell Street, remove existing asphalt from the building and a bunch of other stuff. Item three, West End Reynolds LLC, 508 West Fourth Street, prepping surfaces and making repairs and paint previously painted exterior surfaces. Item four, Williamsport College Housing, 1036 Vine Ave., remove existing asphalt, roofing from entire building and install sheeting and gutters and downspouts. Item five, Mia Ben Luna Family Trust, 719 721 Gray Street, and remove 13 windows from the rear, replace with Anderson windows. All other windows will be repaired and in kind retain, repair, routed, damaged. And I believe that's it. Is there a motion in a second?
Go move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments? Ms. Mealy.
If I can just make a quick comment. We see these certificates of appropriateness from HARB pretty much once monthly after the, after the monthly historical architectural review board meeting. And I forget sometimes how important it is to recognize, A, the frankly somewhat difficult and thankless work that HARB does, reviewing, reviewing properties and paying attention to the historicity of the district and trying to not just maintain that historicity, but improve it so that we can then also improve property values in the district and make the district a more valuable part of our community. But I think it's also simultaneously important that we recognize that there is a lot of hard work being done in our historic district, and this particular list of items is an example of it. We have, we have, we certainly have property owners in the district who do not necessarily maintain their properties in the way in which they would. But we are fortunate to have a number of property owners either living or owning property in our historic district who go above and beyond in their, in their maintenance and their improvement. And those people deserve to be applauded. Owning, as someone who owns and occasionally maintains a historic structure, I can say that it is, it's a bit of a labor of love. And so, I know that there were some discussions at this particular historical, historic architectural review board meeting with at least one of the property owners where we were asking of her that she do some things that she wasn't entirely comfortable with. And they did come to an agreement. But I think it's important to recognize that we have both different personalities and different intents in play in the district, and that we come to an agreement so often and that we find common ground. And that buildings in the district continue to be improved is something truly exceptional. And we appreciate all parties who participate in that process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Other comments or questions from council? If not, hearing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes. Item 18, except for filing, Public Works minutes of 4/23/19, ad hoc council committee WMWA 6/18/19, ad hoc council committee WMWA 6/19/19, public safety minutes of 4/23/19, controllers report for May 2019, finance committee for 4/9/19 and 4/23/19, historic preservation minutes 3/26/19, and veterans memorial park commission 5/6/19. Is there a motion in a second?
Some move.
Second. Motion in a second. Questions, comments, or corrections?
I just want to say the veterans from Royal Park Commission, they are an incredible group of people. I mean, when you read their, with their minutes and what they do, I mean, these people are really on, on track with everything that they're doing. And just for the public's knowledge, they still are selling bricks. And if you haven't been up there to see the veterans park, Memorial Park, it is absolutely incredible. And they keep on adding more things onto it. And it's very impressive, very impressive. And I just want the public to be aware of that.
Well said. Thank you. So, did we vote on it? Yeah.
We need to vote.
Yeah, we need to vote. We're ready to vote.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item 19, announcements. There will be a police pension board meeting immediately follow, following this council meeting. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, August 1st, 2019, at 7:30 PM in City Hall Council Chambers. Upcoming meetings, Monday, July 22nd, at noon, the planning commission. At 4:00 PM, recreation commission. Tuesday, July 23rd, 11:00 AM, historical preservation meeting. 3:30 PM, ERC. I believe we're going to have something then.
Certain, but we do need to. I can tell you that, I can tell you that there's no material for the historic preservation committee.
Wednesday, July 24th, 11:30 AM, redevelopment authority. Tuesday, July 30th, 1:00 PM, finance. 2:30 PM, Public Works. 3:30 PM, Public Safety. 6:30 PM, special city council meeting. 7:00 PM, citizens corps meeting in the Secular Room. And Thursday, August 1st, 7:30 PM, city council meeting. Any items from council tonight? Ms. Mealy?
Just a note that the historic preservation committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, July 23rd, is canceled. There are no agenda items.
Okay, no agenda items, so take that off the list. Any other, Mrs. Katz?
Yes, if our acting mayor could introduce our new rec director, I think everybody would appreciate it.
Yes, I was going to do that.
Okay.
Formerly introducing recreation director, John Washington. And he just joined the team the last few days, and he's getting his feet wet in the pool. But, so, absorbing all he needs to do to get acclimated to the job. And I don't know if you would like to say anything about your background and how you love your job and it's the most amazing thing you've ever done. I don't know if you want to say anything, or no?
No.
Okay, he's still absorbing.
He's still getting his feet wet.
Anything else from council? Anything else from the administration tonight?
Yes, one other thing, as we all know, we have a heat wave coming, which is going to be pretty oppressive, I guess, the next two to three days, upper 90s. And I appreciate councilman Slaughter reaching out and talking, suggesting administration about being proactive about it. And we discussed it, and what we're going to do is the Paddle Wheel Stop, which is down at the Trade and Transit Center 2, which is open Friday from 6:00 to 6:00, Saturday from 6:00 to 6:00. And we're going to also be open for a little bit on Sunday, from 12:00 to 3:00, and we're going to be offering free bottles of water for anybody that, you know, needs to, you know, needs to be refreshed because of the heat. So, and also, we're going to, the police department, they're going to have water in all the cars that are out during the day. So, you know, we'll be looking to make sure everybody is hydrating and, you know, dealing with, could be recrusing heat. So, you know, I just encourage anybody, you know, come downtown to the Paddle Wheel Stop. And, you know, if they, you know, need water, we'll provide it to them.
Wonderful idea. Thank you, everybody involved in. Thank you, everybody involved in this. Good example of helping our citizens, taking the initiative in that. Anything else from the administration tonight? Okay. Any comments from the public tonight?
Sorry, could you go up and give your, for the record, we need name and address or organization. My name's Misty Dionne, and I just wanted to make a subtle comment about the, you know, in reference to the discussion of updating the city hall. We, you know, I appreciate council's comments about your fiduciary responsibility and, you know, making the best with what we have, but, and I'd also like to encourage you to understand that it's not a lack of understanding where you're coming from, but we're passionate. We've been, it's twenty-nine years after the ADA has passed, and yet, we still have people who are unable to access city hall. We have people who are parking in unsafe parking spots. I heard a reference to having to have a parking spot. Can you imagine if you had to only have one parking spot at a place? If you're familiar or have ever used a wheelchair to enter this facility, it's impossible. If you drive and you park out back at the police station, the slope is not ADA accessible. It's unsafe. I don't know how some of the people who are doing it, most of the people that we, that want to be here today are not here because they can't. Once you get in, you have to be buzzed in through the police department. It's locked. You have no access to the general public's access. We've just had enough at this point. I know that, you know, we've been having this discussion for sixteen months. We hear things like the administration's changing, there was an error, a human error, we get that, but how long is that going to slow the process? I'll leave it at this. We beg you to take us seriously. We want access, just like you all have. When the bids come back next month, please, take it seriously and give us a timeline that can help us have access to city hall. And then after that, help us make Williamsport accessible. Have any of you taken a stroll around here in a wheelchair? It'd be eye-opening. I'd encourage you to do it, and I ask that you listen to your constituents with disabilities and give us what you all have, access, twenty-nine years later. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Winder, if the bids came back in the timeframe that was mentioned and construction started, is there a timeframe we could generally estimate now for completion of the ramp?
Lead time for the elevators, about six months.
The ramp? So, three months from when the bid is approved?
When the contract's signed, the bid's approved.
Okay. Is that, does that mean the project will take three months, or they have three months to complete it? It could be done sooner than three? Just to clarify what that?
I would say three months is a good way to estimate.
Okay. So.
Once the contract's signed, construction starts.
So, that's as much information as we can provide tonight, and we'll keep you updated.
What I think we should discuss is, on that element of the project, we can give a timeline that they must meet to ensure that gets completed this year.
Okay, so we have?
So, you know, I think that that's something that's done in a bidding environment, that you can put that, that they must complete it by a certain date, and so, you know, we'll look at that, and I think that's something we can add.
Okay.
So, you'll have a definitive end date of the completion. So, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the public tonight? Please just give your name and address, so we have it for our?
My name is Jerry Webb. I live at eight twenty High Street, Williamsport, Pennsylvania. I'm a veteran, Purple Heart recipient. I have some people in my family with disabilities, and I'd just like to make a statement, if for instance, we had half of the people that's on council and city hall or whatever case may be, disability, wheelchair-bound, and there was a major emergency, and the only way they could get in is like we have access to now, it would be a major disaster, you know? Lives would be at stake. Even with the accessibility we have now, it's the same way, because if nobody's able to buzz us in or out, then it's a problem. So, we need something done now. You know, we, I understand budgets and all those things a little bit, but we're talking about lives. You know, we need to hear the voices of people with disabilities. Too many times, we take it for granted, and I, myself, I would say bias of discrimination, if I can use that word. It's like, I don't use it, so I don't need it. You know, nobody that I know really uses it. You walk about people with disabilities all the time, wheelchairs on the streets or whatever case may be, but if it don't affect you, and this is my opinion, if it don't affect you, it's like, well, it's not necessary. So, I'm asking you, take those things into consideration, that's why I use that scenario. If half the people in this building was handicapped, accessible with wheelchairs, and needed an emergency escape route, how would they get out? And lives are at stake. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? Again, just please give your name and address for our record in a minute.
My name is Richard Penfield. I live at seven twenty-five Woodland Avenue. I've listed all these people. My concern is, seems a bit trifling, but I have pursued all the outlets that I thought were available to me to get a correction to a situation at the rear of our property. Situation in question involves an alleyway. That alley is named Fluck Place. It runs from Penn Street on the west to Almond Street in the east. And it's three blocks long. Our block is the center of those three. The alley is in deplorable condition, borderline not passable to sedans. SUVs seem to be able to manage it. Brief history, I contacted Streets and Parks about sixteen months ago regarding this, and Mr. Winder, after I made a call, and I believe I did visit the headquarters, Mr. Winder did meet with me behind my home. We discussed this condition of the alley. He told me that something would be done, and in conversation, he told me that they would mill the street, mill the alley, smooth it, grade it, roll it, and my impression at that point in time that it was going to be top coated with some permanent durable material, i.e. pavement, or perhaps even a tar and chip surface. They did come in and milled the alley, rolled it, and it was accessible and it was usable for a period of time. But since they've fragmentized all the aggregate that was there, most of it has now gone down the city storm sewer, I think, in the past winter and spring, and of course, with all these rains. I didn't waste time to bring pictures and everything, but I would encourage one of city council to just drive by it, try to drive it. It's impossible. This year, in the spring of this year, approximately six to eight weeks ago, I started calling again in regards to this. I left probably three messages, perhaps four, on the phone. I visited the headquarters once to try to get a meeting, left a message with the administrator there, just to get a call back about it. And I'm sorry to be here, but I never have received any call back from anybody at that department. And I would just like to see something get done. Again, it's a triveling, it's a trifle matter compared to what you've heard here tonight in the business council, but this is grassroots governance, and I would like it addressed. I would like at least a call from somebody in authority to give me some information about what's, what can be done to make it accessible. There's about twelve residents that rely on this alley for ingress and egress, access to their driveways, to their garages. Some people have even taken, last year, some residents have taken the step to bring a trailer load of gravel in and put in holes behind their garages so they don't scrape the bottoms of their cars to get out and get to work or get anywhere. It's also a right of way for Penn, or for PP&amp;L, for the cable company, for telephone. So, it needs to be accessible, and at this point in time, it's borderline not accessible. Again, I appreciate the time just to speak, and I'd like to see somebody contact me and hopefully make some progress on this.
Yeah, certainly. I, it's maybe something we can talk about afterwards and just?
Be outstanding. I'd love a conversation.
Because, you're quite welcome. Are you, and are you talking about the whole surface or potholes or?
It's, the entire alley has deteriorated. The potholes are just everywhere. Again, I would encourage someone to take a drive, try to drive through it.
Right.
It's very difficult. You know, and just to comment in general, you mentioned, we're going to have a new administration here, and we're going to have several new members of council, I see, as well in the near future. I think it would be a good thing to impress upon the department heads, no matter who they are, to be a little responsive to citizens and their concerns. It's just annoying not to even get a call back. In my business for many years, the phone was my lifeline. I talked to people all the time. Some calls are a little harder to make than others, but they have to be made. Thank you.
And you're welcome. Any other comments from the public tonight?
My name's Frank Steckel, Democratic committee man for the twelfth ward. To that gentleman's comment, I could be mistaken, but from my memory of owning properties on different city streets, maybe Mr. Winder can correct me, but I think it's illegal for people to go out and fix their own potholes, as ridiculous as that may sound. It's better to leave it to the non-attention of council and just let somebody get killed, get somebody killed trying to swerve around a hole or hit it, have the tire blow out like happened to me one time. But that's a side issue, but it's an important issue. I think, I think council should maybe take in consideration when we have a situation like that, where people can go out and put some gravel in a hole or something, rather than have it sit there for budget reasons. I mean, to me, it seems safety first. I don't know what the logic is that a person can't fix their own. You know, I mean, I'm sure if it's Fourth Street and there's a hole six feet by three feet deep, they shouldn't be doing it themselves possibly, but anything's better than nothing, I would think, and maybe council thinks differently. But I had a discussion with you, Mr. Allison, before this meeting about people coming in here and taking the time and being able to at least get an answer from council like this gentleman just did, but he got at least a conversation. If somebody comes in and says something, council, I think, has the absolute responsibility. Tell that person they either have to come back next week because they don't have the information, or be directed toward a committee head, or, like he said, the committee head should be directed toward him. Now, that's a personal budget thing. But that showing respect to the public, who are your boss. And I think that's been forgotten. Your former president of council had that misconception. When I was younger, I'd come in here, we had this discussion, Mr. Bailey, Dr. Hippel, usually you ask a question, you got a response. I hope that changes now, because if it doesn't, I could see some legal action down the road. Another subject, I'm not really familiar with the wheelchair issue. I'm surprised they don't have some kind of mechanical wheelchair elevator out front or something, or if that's a possibility or not, I don't know, something more temporary. I don't know if it's been discussed. You mentioned an elevator. It's not a happening thing. It's got to be cheaper than the ramp issue. I mean, the ramp's nice, I'm sure it'll be architectural, architecturally, you know, blend in and everything, but. Last thing, I want to question is, this issue with the roof, I think I was in here over six months ago, there's two pieces of metal on that roof. One's gone, and nobody seems to know where it is. And it's two foot wide, I'm guessing, ten feet long, probably all copper, and I'm sure it weighs close to a hundred pounds. So, maybe it hit the street and somebody took the stamens and scrapped it, I don't know. There's another one up there directly underneath it that's, you can watch it flopping around in the wind, so I'm assuming that'll follow suit. The city has an absolute obligation to correct that before somebody's killed, but you don't seem to, it's like I've been in here twice, and of course, nobody says anything to you here, but I think personally, and I'm not an attorney, maybe you should ask Mr. Lubin right here and see if he'll give you an answer. If that blows off and kills somebody after you've been told and warned and told, maybe that's some kind of criminal negligence, criminal negligible homicide or something. If Lubin doesn't know, maybe the chief knows. Maybe I should report it to the chief, as if my neighbor had something hanging off his building that could kill somebody, I think the police would come in and intervene. Maybe that's what I have to do. I don't want to put him on the spot. Maybe I have to go to the county commissioners or the state. But this is ridiculous. Now, I hope you have something to say about this. I mean, anything would be better than nothing, on the record, I suppose. I mean, you know what I'm talking about, you're familiar?
Yeah, well, I've never seen it, so I can't comment on the?
Was that, I didn't hear you?
I've never seen it myself.
You've never seen it yourself?
No. Well, I don't know exactly?
Well, let me fill you in. The highest spire on this building, you're familiar with the highest spire on this building? It's probably a hundred feet, I think.
Yeah, I know.
Has four corners, is a pyramid.
Right.
It's slate. Each corner has, and you've seen this on these old slate roofs in the, what do you call it, section? Each corner has a metal cap on it, because you can't really make a cap, a slate. Up there, I'm guessing from the ground are this wide, all right? And since the point is like twenty feet long, there's two of them, there must be ten feet each. One of them is gone, and to this day, I've questioned everybody involved, nobody knows where it is, so it's just blew off the building. The other one underneath it is, well, you can watch it flopping around. It's still nailed on one side, and the other side's not attached, so it's flopping around like this in the wind, okay? A friend of mine was driving to Woodlands Bank down here, and I reported this too. A piece of the mural blew off and hit his car. If it had been a human, they'd be dead, okay? Did two thousand dollars worth of damage to his car, and that was only a mural ten feet off the ground. This thing is a hundred, probably, I'm guessing, a hundred and some feet off the ground. If it's a vehicle, it's going to go right through the vehicle. It's not going to be a dent or a dinge. Am I, is it me? Am I somehow not attached to reality here? I don't know. I mean, is it expense? Yeah. And you say, well, we want to do the whole building at once, well, that's fine, you know, but sometimes you don't get that luxury. Sometimes you have to address the issue immediately.
The issue's been raised, and we'll look into it tonight.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
That's it, I guess, that's it.
Any other comments from the public? Not on, can you move for agreement?
Second.